Face of America. Intuitively public for Richard Staines. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. With that, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgo. Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mr. Kowacek?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Zachi?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Each present.
Thank you. May I have the sunshine, please?
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, September 18th, to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws, litigation or threatened litigation matters, salary schedule and labor relations.
Thank you very much. Any correspondence? Okay. And is there a motion to accept the minutes for Wednesday, August 14th, meet and discuss voting and voting, non-voting meeting and Wednesday, August 21st, board meeting?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain, Mr. Carpenter.
Okay. Thank you. Noted. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the Treasuries report dated August 2024?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Any amendments or addendums to the agenda?
Yes, I have several, uh, Mr. President.
Okay.
And personnel. So we have number three is recommended. I'm sorry?
Can't hear, sorry.
I'm sorry. We have number three, salary increase. It is recommended that cafeteria, non-contractual workers hourly rate be increased effective September 19th, 2024 as follows. The current pay rate per hour starting at 10, proposed pay rate per hour starting rate to increase to 11. Middle rate 1025, middle rate to increase to 1125, top rate at $10.40, top, excuse me, and well, top rate to, middle rate, well, I'm sorry, it says top rate, and top rate to increase to $11.40. Number four, it is recommended to ratify the following individuals as paraprofessionals as per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Support Professional Association. Pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing and current former employers. Anton DeLuca Middle School and Sarah Frosto Marquez Highland. Number five is new credit recovery. It is recommended the following individuals be approved as instructor for the credit recovery program at the high school. Teachers will be paid as per the collective bargaining agreement, Cam of the Greens. And number seven is retirement. It is recommended to accept the resignation of Cam Zaluzki due to her retirement from position of $5.25 an hour cafeteria cook at the high school effective September 20th, 2024, with regret. Any questions? Those are the amendments I have.
Okay. And so, so those are items that were added after the, the meet and discuss meeting last week. They were all included in the posted agenda, uh, consistent with the sunshine law. So, so you've identified those new items for, for the board and for the public. It is not necessary to amend the agenda, but it's, it's helpful for, for purposes of transparency for everyone to, to see those new items and to understand those.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, with that, I believe we have a recognition tonight. So I would ask that, uh, I think so. He is here.
Yes.
So I would ask that you join me on a floor for recognition, please?
Good evening. I'm going to greet this state on behalf of the First Order of Oral Hurors, United States Marine Corps Retirement. As a veteran legionnaire, citizen of the Ambridge Area School District community and proponent of children's youth, it is my safe pleasure to recommend Anthony Spicer for special recognition. Anthony is a parent high school senior who is and has been very proactive as a citizen of our community and a role model for others to endure. The following is a list of various programs and activities that Anthony has taken the initiative to participate in, which has been driven to his development. Ambridge High School Band, Skill Band and Jazz Band, participating in nearly school musicals and play. Active member and leader of the Voice Spots of America, founder slash president of the Chess Club, two-year varsity member of the tennis team, former president and member of the Tri and Music Arms Society, vice president of the Boat Club, Black Belt and Mixed Martial Arts, owner of a small watch business, Time Keepers Watch Repair, technology intern for the school. In addition to these activities, Anthony took advantage of another leadership development activity slash opportunity that passed under by attending the American Legion's Keystone Voice Day Program held at Musa University. The American Legion Voice Day Program is among the most nationally recognized, respected and selective educational programs of government instruction for high school students. More specifically, is a participatory program in which students become part of the operation of local, county and state government. At Voice State, participants learn the rights, privileges and responsibilities of franchises. The training is objective and centers on the structure of city, county and state governments. It is operated by students who are elected by their peers to various offices. Voice Day activities include legislative sessions, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, band and recreational programs. Throughout the week, Anthony, who was selected and sponsored by the Bay and American Legion posts, remained very proactive in all levels of the program. In addition to the daily activities, Anthony networked with his peers within the legislative bodies of government. Upon earning the respect of his peers, he was selected to be his party chairman and nominated by his party to run for a state senate position and was one of two citizens of the 127 attendees selected to represent Pennsylvania as a senator at Voice Nation in Washington D.C. Voice Nation is comprised of two representatives from each of the 50 states Voice State programs, where they learned together and participated in like activities on the federal government level. One of the many activities Anthony volunteered for during Voice State and Voice Nation was to honor the American flag and our veterans and display his musical skills by playing to the colors and taps during the day of the rising and lowering of the American flag. In his own words, Anthony stated, "My overall favorite part of the week at Voice State and Voice Nation was talking to the other citizens slash senators about politics and life." Additionally, the availability of the selection, of the section house members who were always there when needed to provide guidance to their life advice. It was an honor to represent Pennsylvania in two weeks that naturally changed my life. In closing, Anthony's achievements, participation in both programs was never working and his achievements are commendable. Therefore, he is worthy of being recognized as a student of the amateur school district and citizen of the community. And First Order of Oral Hurors said that this is the first time in 17 years that he has participated with the program that we have had students go on to, in that Voice Nation. So I'd like to congratulate.
All right. Thank you. Great job, Anthony. We're all very proud of you. We also have ABC Transportation, which is going to do a short presentation for us this evening. The floor is yours.
This second board meeting this evening to be available for parents that are not able to return class week or were able to class day. We're not going to do the old presentation that we did last week if we're not able to come in attendance again without the quality experience of the presentation. Just wanted to come and kind of like acknowledge the people that I began to do this with and who were there this time. Would you share last week what everybody was, the difference between the start of last school year and the start of this year? I'm not sure if everyone in the community was aware that last school year when we took over the company that was off earlier years before, the route software was already put together and all of the routes were already done. It was easier as we completed last school year, there was no necessary updates to them. Like bringing out the seniors who graduated, bringing in the junior students, community people to meet school. This year, however, the software went through an upgrade in which we had to start completely over in the software and had to begin routing from scratch. There were months of time where our staff was being trained. And this is one of the few districts that we actually do the routing for. The other districts that we serve is routing is done for us. So we had to go through extensive training to be able to properly use the software and then do the upgrade. Once the upgrade was done and we were training, we began routing. It was brought to our attention that we were routing in a demo software part of the program. And therefore, we began a brand new file and after doing weeks worth of work, right before school started, we did too again to start over from scratch. This bullet point in the highlights here that took place, so everybody is aware. Did want to bring again to the community's attention, as I stated last meeting, would like to say again. Once we realized how close it was to the start of school, our staff began to work basically around the clock. There were nights that did not end until four, five o'clock in the morning and weekends in which everyone came in to try to get this stuff taken care of in a timely fashion. There were two people that sit behind me today who came and stayed all hours of the evening and on weekends to try to get these updates you change need to the start of school. Dr. Amy Malopowski and Dr. Joseph Pascarella were two that basically gave their time to us. As I stated last meeting, I will say again, I have been in the transportation industry well over 20 years. And to have support from the school district at a time like that is basically unheard of. So I would again like to thank the both of them for the time that they gave us to try and fix the problem. Top of the fact that all of us have needs continue to experience a driver shortage. Once school goes back into session, even though we knew that we were behind in the routing, we had to take our staff out to put them in buses and vans to begin to drive the students to and from school. So now we're taking staff out of the office to make sure that we are covering routes that's our duty. So on top of school starting with the routing in shambles, we are pulling office staff out to cover routes, which means when parents are calling into our terminal, they are not answering the phone any time of that. When all staff comes back from routes, we begin routing again so that they can clean up all of the routes. You asked me on the floor tonight, asked me if you don't understand that technology failed us. I'm not asking for any of these things or money that we are not sending back to what we caused for your families and your children at the beginning of this year. I said last week when I came, maybe not the direct words, which will mention to me and have to learn, that simple publicity would have went a long way. We were here last week and are here again to again reiterate the fact that we acknowledged the failure took place. We are apologizing for the things that happened to your families, to your children. We completely understand the frustrations. Since the breakdown, we have brought in staff that will now do nothing but route for the Ambridge Area School District. We do not have to go through software upgrades moving forward so we not be experiencing the same issues at the beginning of next school year that we experienced at the beginning of this school year. Again, I cannot do anything at this moment but apologize for what everyone experienced at the beginning of the school year. We still have work to do, but we have made significant improvements between the first couple of weeks of school and now. We listened to everything that was said at the meeting last week and we implemented as many things as we could and are still working on implementing some of the things that were brought up to us last week. We will be sitting here through the duration of the evening today and be more than happy to stay here afterward. For anyone that feels that they are still experiencing specific issues that you may not want to bring up in front of everyone here this evening, I'll be here waiting with Amber, who is the manager of the terminal down here, so we can listen to the questions, concerns and problems that we have and fix anything that we can fix or immediately reach out to the district to get some supporting guidance as to how we can fix the issues. So I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and I appreciate their time, listening to what I have to say. You know, again, that's not fixed the things that you went through start of the school year. We are committed to fixing everything and we are continuing and to, to show your difference in your community that we are committed to doing better and that we will be doing better at the start of the next school year. Thank you very much for your advocacy.
Thank you. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the residents' comments or questions or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District under Old and New Business at the end of the meeting.
Yes. If, yeah. So this is the time for agenda items and then the, the second public comment period is for, for other items. So I'm going, so this is the time for you, for, for you and others to deliver comments about the action items that we're about, the board is about to consider. And so, transportation, I don't, I don't believe that there's a specific action item on the agenda for that. So the second comment period is going to be the prime time and so, so in that second public, because I, so I think this is helpful because there may be others who, who also want kind of just to understand how the meeting is going, is, is set up and how, and how we do this. So this is the public comment period. So if you, if there's anything on those action items that you see that the board's about to consider, the sunshine law wants to make sure that this is the opportunity that before they take a vote or consider it, that the public has their opportunity to, to provide their input. So, correct. But so then there's a sec, the second comment period, you'll hear, you'll see kind of indicated on towards the end of the agenda. It has similar rules except that it's, it's open-ended. So any, any resident can, can come forward and deliver comments. Now, I'll also say that, that the, the law kind of designs this so that it's, it's a time for you to deliver your comments and your thoughts to, to your elected officials and to the administration to be heard. It's our practice that if you have questions, that, that you kind of include those as you go along, but that we, we make, we want to make sure you get your full three minutes. And so you kind of get all your questions out and those who, who have been here before, this is, this is the same practice. You kind of give us your comments and all of the questions. Make sure, we make sure that you have your full three minutes or anything less than that, if that's what you need. And then at the end of that, the board can either choose to direct those questions and ask ABC to answer or a member of the administration or myself, or, or they can kind of gather a couple and then try to answer as they go along. So the board isn't required to answer questions in public comment, but minimally, they're always taking notes of what those questions are, who is asking the questions and trying to make sure that we give the most thoughtful answers in the best way we can. Sometimes that is in real time. Sometimes there, sometimes depending on the question, it requires a little bit more. But that's, that is generally how we approach it. Um, and so I think we would be happy to acknowledge you as the first, the first speaker in the second public comment, unless you have, if it's about transportation. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else on public comment regarding agenda items? Okay. Thank you. On to the committee reports. Education and Technology, Mrs. Ramasco.
Thank you, President Carpenter. I will make a motion for number one, under Education and Technology. Second?
Roll, please. Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, any questions?
Any questions on that? Okay. Roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
I'm sorry for being delayed. Um, I believe last week the question was asked, who does this support? And I believe that answer is the high school students.
We received an email that, do you want to?
No, you go ahead.
So we received an email from Dr. Pascarella that said that I believe all of the high school students that are in art classes. Am I getting that correct?
Yeah. He sent us the detail this week. Yeah.
Heard the highs.
Okay.
Okay. Roll, please.
Yes.
Kehoe?
Yes.
Kowacek?
Yes.
From Met?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Finance and Budget, Mr. Zachi.
Yes, Mr. Carpenter, I'm going to, uh, do this in two parts. Motion for acceptance of numbers one through three. And we'll do number four separately since it was tabled last week and that will allow us to do that separately. So motion to accept one through three at this point.
Okay. We got the second. All right. Thank you. Questions? Roll, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mr. Kowacek?
Yes.
Mr. Met?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And on that previously tabled number four, um, comments before motions made?
I, I personally would like more information around item number four with the borough before we move forward with it.
Are you motioning to table?
So I guess my motion would be to table number four until further information is provided and discussed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any additional discussion on that? All right. Roll, please. Motion to table. Roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mr. Kowacek?
Yes.
Mr. Met?
Yes.
Mr. Ramasco?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Building new grounds, Mr. Metz.
All right. It is recommended to accept a proposal from Castle Maintenance Products for a writing floor scrubber for the high school. This is at the cost of $10,995 through the state bidding process cost star. Any questions?
Is there a number one on that?
Yes.
That was already on. No, last week.
Yes. We read.
And then, thank you.
You don't have to read that one.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right. I need to make a motion for one and two.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mr. Kowacek?
Yes.
Mr. Met?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Athletics, Mrs. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you very much. In lieu of, I'm sorry.
And, and as far as athletics, I want to congratulate Coach Mysick and the Ambridge Girls Flag Football. They are now officially a high school sanctioned sport in Pennsylvania. Oh. So I want to congratulate Coach Mysick and the Ambridge Area Girls Flag Football. I did not know that. So maybe we can add recognition for October for her to attend and bring her student athletes. That's great. They are now officially sanctioned for high school sport. Wonderful.
Just something to add to that. I saw notations on that today too. So thank you for bringing it up. But, uh, Ambridge Area School District was one of the first six schools in the state of Pennsylvania to have a girls' flag varsity football team. So Ambridge led from the front on that and I'm very proud of Coach Mysick, very proud of our Ambridge Lady Bridgers and, uh, just awesome achievement. So thank you very much for bringing that up. Public Relations, Ms. Fitzgo is not here, but there is nothing to cover. Steering and Rules, Mrs. Kehoe?
I have no voting items this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Would someone like to read for Ms. Fitzgo for legislation?
I, I'll take it, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Number one.
It's not news.
So I'm just going to
So I'm just going to move for the adoption of item number one under legislation.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, roll call please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Kavasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Met?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Salary, schedule and labor relations, Mr. Kavasevich?
There are no voting items for today.
Okay, thank you. Personnel, Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make the motion for the adoption of one through seven. Any questions?
I, I do have a question associated to number three. We're identifying this as to go into effect tomorrow. Is it potential to have it start at the beginning of the current pay period that we are in for these employees? This was a delayed interaction for them of roughly three years.
Think your question is, I, I think his question was, are we able to go into the current pay period, not the next pay period? In other words, go back a couple days if, if that was the case, like.
Correct.
So I, I, I think that would probably be possible, Solicitor, but I think it would have to be retroactive as of September, I would say 16th probably then, because I think pay periods run 15.
Correct. And to facilitate that, if, I mean, just procedurally, we would need a motion to amend the, that particular item.
May, may I have a motion to amend item number three to initiate the increase of $1 per step to the beginning of the current pay period?
September 16th, right?
Retroactive.
Retroactive up at the beginning, September 16th and not September 19th, correct?
I'm not sure what pay periods start. Okay.
So that might, that might be fair if you just wanted to say to the current pay period.
To the current pay period, please.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Right, so now the motion before you is a motion to approve items number one through seven as amended.
I'll motion.
Thank you, second. I heard a second, okay, roll please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Keough?
Yes.
Mr. Kavasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Met?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to say again, I had written down comments on the girls' flag football team as well. It's just an outstanding achievement, really a grassroots program, and I can't share my congratulations with them enough. They did a fantastic job in Amberage, again, really led from the front in the entire state for that, so I appreciate that. Again, I want to share my appreciation to the community for their patience as we work through the bus, busing issues. I think I shared last week and I share again this evening, I have a daughter that has been caught up in it too. And many of our families, many of us that sit up here have kids and have experienced similar issues, so I appreciate your patience in working through that and I believe that we are finally on the right path and starting to see improvement. I also want to thank the administrators, the teachers, all of the coaches, staff. Putting, putting busing aside, which is difficult to do for me, but putting busing aside, there is a lot of positivity happening in this district right now. It's been a long time since we've had a football team that's two and one. That's exciting to see. Big game tomorrow night, by the way, if you feel like travel, driving to Greensburg. But all the sports have really started very well and, and our kids are doing well academically too. So it's really good to see everybody back in the school and so much activity happening. With that, I'll close on my comments and Mrs. Turnbull?
The, the bulk of my legal report was shared with you in executive session. I am happy to reach out to, to the Amberage Borough Manager and request any additional information that you need on that tabled item or at your request invite, to invite representatives to a future meeting. So I'll, I'll work with board leadership and Dr. Pascarella on that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, thank you. Like to congratulate again Anthony tonight. That was awesome to be able to recognize him on his accomplishments. Excellent news about our flag football team. Thanks to Coach Mysick and everyone who helped to get that started. To all of our fall sports, music and all students, staff, community who helped to get this school year off to a great start. Thought homecoming was an excellent event, very positive. Proud day to be a Bridger, nice weather too, so that always helps. So it was an excellent day for all the kids, parents and community. Again, like you said, thank you to all the staff who have helped to get this school year off and running. We greatly appreciate it, no matter what your role is. We really do appreciate everything you're doing for our kids. And as you said, we continue to work through the busing. Special thanks to Dr. Filipowski and her work in that, along with ABC. I appreciate the ownership and your steps forward. We know we have work to do around that. As far as to the parents, we do apologize, as we've said, I think, a few times tonight or any inconvenience as we know that this may have caused you. We will try and to work diligently to correct that as soon as possible within the means of the labor force that they have. I'll continue to press for ABC to do their very best, as I know they are. And I'd also like to take a moment, I think we did that a little bit last week, to thank those folks from ABC who are driving buses and vans each and every day. I think we heard that last week and I think it's important to reiterate the fact that we do appreciate what they do each and every day to try to help, you know, these students get to school as soon as possible. If there are issues, as was said, we want to talk about it with ABC. We know that sometimes in the form of communication, if you feel like the communication is lacking, we've tried to do better with that. We talked a little bit about personal phone calls that were made to parents to try to let them know about those change in stops and as they've been adjusted. We've talked about when we would implement that and continue to try to communicate that, whether that be in writing or by phone call in the future, to continue to try to improve. And again, we're sorry for anything that may have caused you any inconvenience, but we're working diligently to try to, to correct that as soon as possible. With that, I'd just like to thank everybody for a good start to the school year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pass, Dr. Pascarella. It's now time for old and new business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Amber Ridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once.
This could be, this could be on any topic related to Amber Ridge Area.
The mic, you can move the mic if you wanted to, we were saying.
You can lower it, ma'am, too.
We can't hear you.
He, he's, he's working on it. Thank you.
Oh, ma'am.
No, they, they can't hear you when you don't have a microphone, I'm sorry.
You want to, can we give her?
Just let her.
Go ahead and, go ahead and revisit that, please. Thank you. That's something you can.
I can, I can speak to it at, at a high level. The board has, has been engaged in communicating with the Baden Library Board about concerns surrounding safety. Those have been communicated in writing to the board and I've received an engagement back from, from, from an attorney on their behalf, just speaking to their intention to address some of those. We've, we've welcomed and we continue to welcome a continued engagement around addressing the, the district's concerns and, and we will, we'll continue to keep those lines of communication open. I, I believe that, that, that those communications began last year and have, have continued through, through this point in time and we're largely pointing to legal obligations that, that we believe are, are important for, for anyone to kind of working with the populations that they do to, to acknowledge and to implement. That sounds good. You're welcome.
And then for those of us with additional questions that we have funding issues or concerns for the bus, so we're recalling any, your number, or we're calling you, Brandon, what's the proper, they, they should pay. And maybe I can just be, be polite or rather communicative, so, you know, or go, so they're getting entered, not needing any of this way, you know, for a big event. And then the other item, which is, I guess, the business, I just want to say, and satisfy the baby card and where that's so, you know, maybe it's sense.
Thank you for that question. Is, is that something we can speak to?
There.
The question on the charter?
What I can say is that there, the process is ongoing and again, that's, that's another place where we're, there's, there's a dialogue happening. It's not in, so there's, there's dialogue going on between the two parties. There, there is none at this time and both parties have kind of suspended timelines while, in order to have good, good quality conversations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Want me to answer about the communication?
I'm sorry, but we're circling back on one of her questions yet, still.
So I, I think the question was around, how do you communicate that? I think step one was what we were asking is that they would call ABC Transit. That's step one. They did recognize that many of their staff members were out driving, which was causing a problem with being able to, to be able to get back to you in a timely manner. I do know if you aren't getting a return call, the next step is to reach out to the school district. And I know whether that was through your building principal or straight to Dr. Filipowski, she's been trying to get back to folks as quickly as she possibly can. So I think the answer is to try your, your best to go through ABC and I, I understand that they're trying to get additional support and help to be able to answer those calls and get you those answers. However, if that fails, then the next step would be to, to contact the school and we try to reach back around to ABC to, to help get that answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Could you pull that, I'll see.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you, please?
Yeah. First day school, bus didn't show up at all. I had a bus, several kids actually went up, my daughter just turned this week, her day until further ado. Then I'm living pattern. I'm not, that's something else to be sitting out in front of her until five o'clock, running waiting for my six-year-old and nine-year-old, you know? I think that's a long day, that's ten hours a day, I think I'm seven. Both adults are from the burton homes and it's a shame. I just want to make, I love every single bus driver I ever met and I got no, I'm sorry. But we got a class today, we're up to sixty. But, so I, yeah, I got a bus driver, I'm good to be a part of it. I don't want to get funny, I know it's a, that's my plan, I'm playing, compared to the guys, whatever, I hope you guys get together because, you know, it's unclear, it's a six-year-old that happens every day, it's just not. And I had one really made like that. I'm here also wanting to, my daughter has three kids in this street, one at the elementary school and one at home and also at my middle school. I'm gonna take this up, middle school, I should say, she gotta go, I take it up, it's going on her, it's one of those things, she got a, what a slap in the face this is. Her kids have been at truth station never, not in all the years she's been at school, it's almost fourteen. So we got a fourteen, forty, that's not due to him, that's the bus. He sat before absences, two species danger in, and two, I could not take him to school, my daughter doesn't have a car. After one weekend at school, I finally decided I have to make office appointments too. I kept having humans close to school bus. This is ridiculous that this can stay is unlawful until the other school, Disney, received great speeches, it'd be unbreakable, you guys know the bus that they made last year? My granddaughter, my grandson, I'm from my house, was an hour late every single day. At least the person sat up there, signed them all with, what about this year? What did they do with them? Knowing he was actually tardy because he's not the tardy kid, you know? I didn't know we take care of that because it's eight, you know, this, you know, it's a bus, bus is being late. That's what I'm trying to say, that's the slap of my daughter's face and mine because we need to, he can't go, I can take him, I take him. We believe in education and our family and school district. I gotta say something.
Thank you. That is your time.
That's your time, but.
Well, I have one, I have one question for you. Have you already asked, you said that's on your daughter's behalf? Okay, she just received it yesterday, so she hasn't let, has she let anybody at the school know yet? Okay.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Message received, thank you.
Yeah. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Message received. Thank you.
Um, since you said you have social worker, don't want to go visit, uh, they.
To Catherine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
President.
Yeah, we'll definitely follow up on that. And, you know, each case may be individual or it could very well be that for some reason they were marked tardy when they shouldn't be, but we'll definitely follow up that as, as an overall. And I encourage anyone to follow up individually. I'm sorry if that did occur.
President Carper.
Yes.
Can I ask Dr. Pascarella a quick question? So when it comes to tardies, are the, do you know if they're automatically taken off if the bus is late or is that something that parents are? Like, or do we need to be calling? I honestly don't know for my own children. Do we need to be calling in and letting somebody know that's why they were late or? What is the procedure?
For the exact building procedure, I would need to double check with the principals, but from what I've heard when I've been in the buildings, as it would say, bus, you know, please hold your attendance because bus, one, I'm making the number up, 100 is, is going to be late and adjust that accordingly. That's what I've heard come across, but the announcements or in an email. So I would, I will follow up with all the principals on this and the social workers if that did happen. I mean, obviously every case is different because you could have some students that are absent or you could have students that weren't absent at all and it was all because of this and it was a mishap. So I, I will definitely double check with that, with the principals.
Thank you. I have a question also. So when the students are getting dropped off, there's a, I've got numerous calls. I don't have a, I have a student here as well, but she's a walker. But when they were in the middle school, they go into school late. They have to go to the office and check in. Is it there someone that should be checking these students in when they get off the bus? And they could be notifying or marking them as they're tardy because of the bus? Because I, I mean, I agree. I don't think that's acceptable for them to receive that letter. I appreciate you looking into it. But shouldn't there be someone who should be checking and saying, okay, well, bus, well, 10 or 101 was late and these are the students, they'd have to go and sign in and get a pass? Am I correct or am I missing something? That's how it's always been with my daughter was on school. So I'm not understanding how that happened.
If you're late, I would agree with that. Yes. I would say that there probably, there could be occasions and I need to double check it where if a bus is just late, they're letting you know these students that are on this bus are coming in right now. I don't know if they write, from your point, an exact pass for that states that. But I have heard them say, hold attendance for this bus being late. But what I need, do need to make sure is whatever their process is that it's being followed through with to make sure that we're not sending letters that we should not be sending.
I just, that's something that's a concern for me because I mean, I've seen the high school kids stand outside literally in the cold, waiting, raining because they have to wait to check into the office if they're coming in late. So I think that for any of these schools, it needs to be, that someone needs to be at that door and they're marking these students off. Okay, I just want you to get off this bus. We know it's not something you're late because of, you know, a doctor's appointment or a parent, you know, something happened, God forbid, but it's because a bus was late.
Agreed. Thank you.
We used to have a bus last year, small bus, now we're having a little bit of that, students, students, they have a job and now I have to take out four hours and two hours each day in merit somehow. So you guys, my mind, they will disappear because you failed us. We need to fix. Now I mean, it's, I don't, they are gentle, it's, it's respectful of all us because it's going to be the top of it. But us, the basis, they're not just a comment section, they, it's got to be open, okay? This is what we do. And I, I want to hear today what happened, why did this happen? People's busy. What I heard, I heard rumors, and I'm just curious. Did you guys did not plan on the increase or just the integration with the drivers and we're losing drivers, so I was two pieces. So we made that assessment and did not raise salary. I don't know, is that a possible position that we have this year? This is the first one, I'm not lying to you, I need to understand what happened, okay? If you don't understand what happened, we're not going to fix this year. Who contracted the company that's prepared on us last year? It's just bad last year. Who contracted? We don't, you guys all hold the knowledge, okay, yeah, great, let's pick them again, if it's bad last year, let's do it again. In the right line, we better. We have options, every school district has options. So I understand it's not a nice story, just didn't leave to this company, where you gotta do what you gotta do, right? If you don't have resources, you don't have drivers, then you gotta go out and tell people, if you get a 820, this school district pays 170. All my drivers gonna go, you're not getting the drivers, we need to fix, and you can be a better, that'll be an issue. Who contracts with the bus company that doesn't have a way to, the system plays solid and doing a thing in the middle of the year, right at the beginning of the season? That's major failure. You said it, that's up to the major failure, man. So I'm going to cut it short. So do we have an outpost? And we consider other companies today, bring them in and say, hey, why, why don't you guys take over or take over 50% of that business? Simple as that. When the company fails contractually to deliver their expectations, we have a right. If you have lawyers looking at this contract, we're going to have an outpost, gonna go out there and gonna source other, other drivers, other companies. That's what we do when we fix some things. Don't hope they're gonna fix it. You go out and find your source. Simple as that. If you cannot hire drivers, cannot find good companies, means we're not paying enough. Well, many taxes, I've got poor neighborhoods and school districts, they have not money for the drivers to go, you know, just, you know, I, I hope you can answer this. Good question. My presentation, one presentation, he looked on the edge and had a, a human speech. If you don't, it's not going to be a piece. So we're gonna.
Thank you for your touch.
So the, the time that I spent saving last year, the transportation, all of that, everything, this. However, I did say that a simple base whatever for me would be designed upon the kids' bus. I even sent an email out to the bus owner there the next day. I do appreciate that. I can take this, that thing, but I can see the signs. Also, I did do a little bit of research, asked what, you know, the C D L driver does, made, made in Pennsylvania. And from what I know, I'm blindly guessing, they said that they made roughly $34 per hour. What I saw was that the bus drivers at a street that the C D L drivers were making made public, just under $24 per hour. When I posted that on Facebook, somebody said that they had a bar about to go, they said that it's actually still some people that's coming that, again, I don't know, again, specifically, then obviously, I, you know, ask these students personally. But again, I'm just researching, you know, that they're not making, may not, for them. Also, when I did talk to bus drivers, they, they didn't say that the students, parents, they're, they're not being treated right. And you know, they also are under those conditions and they're not going, so clearly they're not, that's how, you know, bus drivers. Other concerns that I'm wondering, I just say, yeah, there's some positive things here happening. But I feel like the negatives are just so big that they are away in the process that, you know, these positive things aren't good enough to keep our employees' kids here. Like, you have employees under this that are intentionally moving out of the district, getting their kids out of the district. That they're teaching because of the things that they're seeing, because of what's going on in the district. Literally, they, they're saying, they don't, up there, they could be typically, you know, they say, oh, they're not down. So they're going to stay here and maybe try to help them stay with their, their kids out of here. And do, you know, give advice on that. So take the, we'll get this pilot. Every year that I'm in the district, I get done there, I've got an email or a letter saying that they fall by the bottom 10% of the state. And then if I want to, I can send my kids up for us. Unfortunately, my kids special needs, so if you guys fill the bill, fill for her regular education, I have to fill the bill in for her special education. So my option is here because I can't afford additional $34 bills. So yes, I appreciate all the positives, I really do, but this may just sound, literally like I'm letting our students down, you're letting our community down. And something has changed. And honestly, I'm sorry, it had to start with you. My best friend worked for the thing when you were there. And she said the only time she ever attended a school meeting was because our, one of her PTA members moved out of the district consistently because of you. I, the problem, every district has had the same issue. They like, stamina, if they have whatever, then it seems to be where we can go, it's a piece of.
That's your time. Thank you.
Jen, mom.
Hi.
So I know the mom was a reminder, so I'm going to move around a couple. My daughter called yesterday and it's, we don't know, we've used the bus a lot of the months, I don't see the future, it's going to be an hour later every day. Mama had the news, the number of accidents that have happened the last three years, with his bus always being late. Yes, we said to the father, it isn't my community phone, he has a baby, it's me. And it has very high temperature. So he goes out there, I take him to school every morning. He finally took the bus home yesterday. My daughter called ABC Transit and asked where the bus stopped them because they have them at Fox Pizza with seven other little kids. Then they have them at 12 in church. Well, nobody got back to her, not one person, he said, and it was all. So they came out church, we thought he saw a mom somewhere. Well, they hung off at 12 in church, that's not my bus stop, I don't know where they are. Bus driver goes, well, I thought you said you saw a mom. She said, he goes, my daughter's already might not get her. She said, you have to get off the bus. He said, I'm going to go and tell you, I don't know, this is not my bus stop, I don't know how to get off from here. She said, you have to get off the bus. I talked to the bus driver again, well, first thing, I'm sorry, he walked down, he cracked all that shit, ass, church street. And he went over to the very good place where he goes, he decides to stay in place for him, because he knows a lot down that way. So a seven and a half year old walked across the valley, she didn't get the bus driver, she said, oh, well, sorry, you have to get off the bus, this is where we were selling bus boxes. I thought today, and I said, no, I mean, the lady was very nice. She's like, well, we'll figure this out. Last year they changed their bus stop to the bus pizza. If you get the bus in the morning there, why would you drop him off? Only one at 12 in church. So today they changed the bus stop, the bus driver drove him off today, she apologized, I said, she knows a lot happened yesterday, I'm sorry to be back to the daughter. I said, I understand that, I think it's a reality, but you're a seven and a half year old, twice the little that was you. She came right there, it's not inspired by her, I mean, that's not ridiculous, that should not be happening. And if you guys, like they said, you guys are the family of us, because here the thing, what happens if something would have happened again? And you stop a little bit, but if you knew what's because, either the bus company, whether the bus company stopped? You guys don't think about that. I mean, you don't have kids, you don't have ranching, whatever it may be, but the thing is, you're not doing a good job of these kids. These elementary kids, they're doing an hour shift every day because their bus is a little late. So what happens then? Since they have to fail, you know, they have to be behind because of the education, because our buses are late every day. It's not fair, because in like the moment, it's an embarrassment. A second grade, they get home at five thirty, six o'clock every night. They got a school three or five. It doesn't take three hours to get home from the economy, elementary school damage. That's ridiculous. I mean, teach people, if something would have happened again, you guys have something. You guys have to see my point on that. I mean, if you're a teacher, you're a teacher, I wish you'd feel for your readout. Keep your gun here, people slide across that red, and the bus, the bus company and the school district, I'm sorry, you guys are fair enough.
Thank you.
Dr. Filipowski.
Hi.
Jen, I, I did see, somebody sent me a portion of that today and I, I did inquire about it. I don't know if, Kristen, were you able to look at that? Is there, maybe afterwards?
I talked to her.
Could you please? Sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hear your daughters. Misses, had a junior spell. My one son, he's a freshman here, does bad mind flare, he has mind states. So when I brought in a lead student, my wife asked me to follow up on our junior's transfer out of the district to the middle school. We did the transfer, they told us that until he stated to get transferred, he needed to be handed. We sent it to Andrew, my wife got all strongly, wanted to come take him up because he was to be transferred. He wasn't helping in school. The ultimate outcome was the transfer, the transfer was in that. So I came Tuesday the 10th, and I talked with A-Mot, I guess it's the secretary, who I guess would be corresponding. When she came out, she came out very aggressive. And I said, I'm just trying to understand why Chris's not in school is the one that's in. And last two years, we had lots of visits, and we ended up with magistrates because of citations from inside the school. So she told me that I wasn't permitted to any of that information because I wasn't wanting any of this information. While I know of him, because last year, Mr. Parker helped us get our son into I E P. I got my wife on the phone, the secretary, Terry, she was doing this, she wanted me. I asked to speak with, I said, then we're going to go and have a lot of ass to speak to, so we're going to solve this. Lady was working in front of the line to go get him, and Mr. Ron Deo came out, engaged with me. In that name, you need more of Mr. Ron Deo in this district. If you see him after the thing I was, this is very. This is the first meeting I've been to in a year. Because I needed to take a step back and I needed to focus on my mental health, they really understand what constructive communication is like. And that's what this district and this community lacks. It's nitpicking, it's back and forth, it's never constructive communication. And that's something that I now stand. And after my interaction with Mr. Ron Deo, I recognized that I was getting yelled at me and I brought myself back down. And I apologized to him if I was coming off as impressive. I'm just frustrated because I was just snitching. And then when Mr. Ron Deo, he believed he'd be back up, he went into the office, I turned around, there's two Amber's police officers standing behind me. They, Amber's police was called for a disordered man who was screaming and yelling because of the disturbance.
Mr. Dugay, out of, out of respect for everybody, you are past your time. And I think there's other people that want to comment too. We're happy to have that discussion with you. I think I talked to you a little bit on Friday night. Happy to talk to you again. Is there any recommendation, what, with, with what his steps?
That school employee's husband removed me from my daughter's football game the next day and had me arrested. And he came to me and arrested, and I'm the one being arrested, and I was removed from my daughter's game in retaliation to an incident with his wife.
Yep. Like I said, that is your time. Do we have a suggestion as to his best communication method with us on that?
Yes, I think, I mean, we've, we've had phone conversations before you and I. Well, well, let me finish. I said we have, we've had him, we've had him before.
Your time's up.
We've had him before. So I was not made aware of this incident from you yet. So I guess the next step is I'll have to look into it at the high school. And then somebody would be reaching back out to you.
I made sure the officer who was working at the football game, his body camera got the timers.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment.
I need a phone call on whether you know how to speak and how board chiefs is to do so. And I nicely heard that he may or may not answer now, but we will get an answer. So I've asked this question multiple, multiple times. Someone asked again, because I'm yapping this. So number one, what are, what makes our superintendent's golden objectives? And how are we holding them accountable? So that when we're complaining to you, that we can cheap track. There is none of this. Number two, last week, Dr. Passerella sat there and said he personally had a phone call and made phone calls about each children's butt lid in the bus route. And things are going wrong because he didn't want to send out communication to everybody. Well, clearly, there's a lot of communication methods to be addressed. Because number one, I just listened and I have no kids in the district. So if I have to read about it, hear about it, it makes me very angry that there is not enough happening for the good. But when all that happens and there's more bad than good, it makes me mad that you're talking about my purpose. And you guys are the ones who make me, are holding accountable to make some of these happen. So I heard these parents say that they have no communication, that they're getting late responsive, but that they're late until further notice. And my next question is, are we meeting I E P regulations? Are these I E P state laws? The third question is, your school hand vocabulary does state that if your child is going to be late, that you have to call and report if your child is late. That is in your handle? You didn't even know that means or to tell them? So my question to you is, what are you doing to view this protocol? What are you doing to have a stand outside in the winter, in the rain and the snow? They can't get through the metal check. It's hard not to get checked. But you're sure that you're not descending on a metal stick called the hindquarters stress for virgins that you put in the latest service school? You had that choice and I asked that question at that war being before school started? And that wasn't done. So the next question is, I know that the standardized testing scores are out. So not ask the question about what our standardized scores are, how our schools are doing, what are those results that I know they're out? So I would like a presentation. So the, the nice presentation that I saw that was, in my opinion, skewed on my son being in our district, I would like to see that more with also. Because I would like to know what my type of eligibility is. So to, thanks so much. Then, as your children, they want to sit down and there's a community needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
First point is overcrowding at safety guidelines. Section eighty D and eighty N requires that the buses that are overcrowded not to exceed capacity. Yet, students are frequently forced to sit in a house. Section eighty mandates transporting children to their designated stops. But as referred, there are many students who have been left off at stops that are not their stops or students have been lost. Another point, communication failures. Section three point one two requires that the buses have functioning two-way railroads, which been a deep lack, including by some of those. Section three point one five mandates that notification, mandates notification for delays of fifteen minutes or more. However, casual receiving late notifications, if any notifications at all. Lack of, lack of prior engagement. Section seven point nine B requires that an ABC supervisor is to address the concerns addressed. But there's been little evidence of ineffective problem solving steps that have been taken. Not only this year, last year, and the previous year. Cost issues. The eight-year contract that we recently signed with ABC, the recent signed eight-year contract with ABC, instead of, instead of assuming its existing roads contract, it's my understanding, speaking with ABC, that ABC didn't back apply our road transit. Instead of assuming that contract, the board decided to increase or to renegotiate contract with ABC, increasing the cost over a five-year period of at least two point six million dollars. Section three point seven of the ABC contract penalizes the district financially if we decide that we need to reduce the number of buses that we're sending out to students. Now, there's also conflict of interest. Well, what I feel is a conflict of interest, we have the president or vice president of the school board, that's also a manager of ABC. If anything, Mr. Vice President, you should be helping our students. Now, these issues, safety concerns, excessive costs, and potential conflict of interest are a critical requirement that need to be addressed. We owe it to the taxpayers, to families of this community, to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely and that the current transportation contract does not reflect the level, or does not reflect the level of physical irresponsibility that's currently going on in this district.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
Contract. I mean. Yes. Okay, they just asked me to respond a little bit. Is that okay? So as far as the contract with ABC goes, a little bit of background information on facts. When we went back out for, for bid originally, Rhodes and ABC applied. Rhodes was significantly less expensive than ABC. After review of, of the analysis of what it was going to be, we decided to extend our, our agreement with Rhodes for, I believe it was a five, five-year period. At the conclusion of maybe the first year, if I'm correct, of that contract. Mr. Rhodes called for a meeting. I didn't know what the meeting was about. Mr. Rhodes informed me that he would do his best to try to help us in the transition, but that in one way or another, he was not going to be in business anymore. Okay? This was in June. Of the year going in, August would be when we had to pick students up. Not this, not this summer, summer before. Yep. That's how it happened. Based upon that, I did reach out to some other neighboring transportation folks to see if they would be able to do it or be able to be competitive in the bid. Even though at the time, ABC seemed to be who he was recommending, meaning Mr. Rhodes, and seemed to be able to do it. At that time, at least, one of the other companies that I reached out to would not have been able to get the buses in time to be able to put a competitive bid in competition. Explain this to the board at the time, which is a different board. Some members are still on here. Some were not on there when the decision was made. In particular, Mr. Metz was not on there, just for your information. Okay. So, that being said, I explained that to them. Time is ticking on. They wanted, and I don't want to get into every piece of it on contract negotiations, but we'll go with this. They wanted a longer term that was settled. They wanted higher rates than were settled. They wanted, naturally, in any negotiation, higher increases. And times going by to the point where now it's July, going into August, trying to negotiate the deal. Where it settled, which I could tell you, was better than, I feel, other folks that negotiated with them. At least from my experience with the one other in the county, got them to give us Rhodes rates for one year. They knew it was going to be difficult and they said that they would be able to do better in the future. But for the first one, it would be difficult. And I says, okay. So we got Rhodes rates. That point, it's July, we needed it by August. Got it down to an eight-year deal, which was still longer than I would like, but it was a lot less than what was requested. Maxed the CPI up to a certain percentage instead of unlimited CPI, which at the time the CPI was much higher. The Consumer Price Index that looks at that comes up with the percentage. I put a cap on it, on our contract. Not every contract got a cap. That's the facts. You can see it in the document if you read it. Ours is capped, others is not. Talked with Mr. Silverman through that, who was the owner of the company, negotiated it. When it came down to it, at the end of the day, we did sign the deal so that we would have transportation. No one else would be able to get the buses. Since then, we anticipated that this year would go a lot smoother. I think you heard from them some of the reasons why it may or may not have. One thing I will tell you is, and I think they shared this before, there are only a few districts now that they route for. Well, Rhodes was routing for us. So I had asked that it had to be part of the situation that, excuse me, part of the contract that they route for us as well. Otherwise, that'd be an additional employee for us on top of the increasing costs. So their costs did go up in year two, to your point, which was the reason why originally we stayed with Rhodes, because their costs were much higher. The idea was that because of that, some of that would go into better management, higher wages, signing bonuses, all these things that they, they talked about that would increase the number of drivers. And hopefully, at least for the cost, because we really didn't have any choice to save the money any longer, but it would be a better service. And that's still the expectation that I hope and to hold. So I do think they have been working diligently to try to correct this at this point. I do think they have to be held accountable. I hear what you're saying. As far as legal matters, I'm not going to discuss those in public. That would be from the solicitor about clauses about opting out. But at the end of the day, I'm just honest with you, that's how it went. And at the given situation, I wanted to make sure our children had transportation. If we held out on that, we had no one else that was going to take us at that given time. And I do feel, I did some reference checks from some other places that they did service. One in particular phone call I made, I could tell you right now, was the North Hills. They gave them a very good reference and said they had an excellent reputation and they're a great company. Recently, I know, and I'm not picking on that community, but I, I know that they are having some, some issues in shortage as well. So I'm not making excuses, but we did do due diligence. It was supposed to be better. And I think we have to continue to try to work on making it better to get that. That's a little bit about where we were on the contract negotiations and how it went out in the time that we had to do it. So I think that provides you a little bit more information. And it wasn't that we just gave, we didn't have the opportunity to just say, oh, you could just take over Rhodes' contract for the whole five years. That's what we would want, because those prices were according. That wasn't what was able to be negotiated in the deal. They didn't have to say yes. No, they, they, they bought, my understanding of it, and I would have to have their personnel speak to that, is they, they purchased off of, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go there. I'm just gonna tell you, that's not, my understanding was from anything that I talked, solicitor was involved into, we could not force them to take that contract and Rhodes' contract was null and void. I got them to agree to the first year of being Rhodes' rates. After that, it was a fair negotiation and they were one of the only ones, the only one that I knew at the table. So that, that is where we are. You could read the, the language as well as I can about clauses to opt out or, or thirty day notices or whatever else, sixty day notices that might be in there. We could go down that, we could read that down to the letter of law with the solicitor. But the end of the day, what I'm really looking forward is, and I think we've heard this, that there's a lot of good bus drivers doing a lot of good things. And so we, so we appreciate that. And I know that some of the administration is also trying to drive these buses and these vans to help these kids too. And I appreciate them. That being said, there is a shortage. Some folks talked about the dollars that were paid to those individuals versus others. I understand that. It was my belief that this was a competitive contract that we issued with them, higher wages, and that they would see some of those dollars to help recruit more drivers. But I think, in my opinion, it needs to be better. That's true. We gotta hold them accountable. That's true. I'm sorry. That's true. But after all that's said and done, there is a shortage that is for, for bus drivers and other positions as well, that, that goes well beyond just Ambridge School District. There's shortages, maybe not every district, but there, we surely aren't the only one that has a shortage. And that doesn't help solve the problem. I understand that. It doesn't help the frustration level. But the facts are, there is a shortage. We continue to try to work with them to come up with the best plans that we possibly can to get this improved. So we'll continue to talk about that as, I think, as a board, as superintendent, as administration. And we'll continue to try to work to do the very best that we can for it. But that is the story of how the contract came, came out. He was, he was fair. He, he, he came in and negotiated. He was the one that had the buses. We negotiated the best deal that we can, which I know firsthand is better than other folks got, and not perfect. One other point I think you made, which was valid, and I've asked them, and I've asked others to check them. Could we supplement those runs with other companies? At least from the one major player that I know, right now, they told me they aren't able to supplement him and he's, at this given point, this other company, local company, because they're already supplementing, supplementing him on other contracts that he has for their vans and buses and those things. They already had a partial contract with them that wasn't available to Ambridge, or we would have discussed that. That individual told me that should they get enough drivers, they would let me know. And so did Mr. Silverman said, as soon as they get enough drivers, he would let me know. And he would surely supplement that if he could. But he's saying he can't get a, a hold of anyone. I didn't take him only as his word, although I do believe his word. I made a call to at least somebody that I know, and right now, they don't have anybody else to do it for Ambridge. And I didn't make that call today. I made that call way back. So we are looking into some of the things that you're thinking about. And again, not just you, everybody who's frustrated. And we apologize for it. And we'll just continue to try to do our very best to try to correct it. So that is the story from our end on a negotiation point. And we'll continue to hold them to the letter of the law to the best of our ability within the contract, with the idea of, is there just another option? I'm not sure. Number one, that's not what I'm recommending. My recommendation is to continue to work with them and Mr. Silverman to fulfill their end of the contract and provide excellent services. So that's what people are asking too. I don't want to go back and forth, Mr. President, but I will answer that one because I probably should have said. There are specific penalties. However, if we negotiated penalties against somebody, what I don't want to have happen, and I'll say this into the microphone, is that we just get penalties back and we don't provide the services. To me, I'm more concerned about the services being provided than simply getting the dollars back. One might say, well, yeah, but they're not providing it, get it back. I think that's something that's going to become a legal matter that I don't think, what we would have to discuss, and I don't think we're there yet. But from where I sit, just simply getting dollars back, because we had that with Rhodes and we publicly stated that we got money back from Rhodes, that really wasn't the end goal. Because simply getting money back and not transporting the kids on time, not attracting to get more, is really not the goal for me. And I don't think it's the goal for any of you. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't explore that, or the board might not give direction to look into that. But I also don't want that to become the way it is. We'll just pay the penalty and continue to be late. Because to me, I don't really think that's the goal. Thanks.
Yeah. We're ordered, please. Yeah, we have to have one speaker at a time.
We're ordered, please. Yeah, we have to have one speaker at a time. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hold on, I don't, I don't hear you on there. Try it again.
Yes, and actually, if I could ask you to hold while, while we catch you a new microphone. I've heard it a couple of times where they, I've heard mention of Vice President Metz. In line with ethics concerns, and I just wonder if you can speak to that.
Now, I'd like to. And I'll preface it in saying that when people use the word ethics, it means a lot of different things to different people. But I'll say from my seat and in the role of the solicitor, there are standards. There's a state law. It's the Pennsylvania State Ethics Act that speaks directly to what ethics means as a legal matter and what an elected official may or may not do. And so I want to be clear that Mr. Metz, serving in the role that he has. In no way violates the Pennsylvania State Ethics Act. He at no time has participated in deliberations or votes involving. Virtually any component of, of our transportation contract with his employer, which is ABC Transit. And I will say that he has exceeded his obligations under the law in almost every situation that I can imagine. And he has abstained from voting even on hiring or the approval of hiring lists for, for drivers. The district additionally has policies that, that address nepotism and, and ethics from, from a local standard. And he has met or exceeded all of those as well. And so that doesn't discredit anyone's other, your perceptions or your concerns. But I, I want to say very, very clearly that the actions of Mr. Metz. In his role as an elected official, from, from, from my seat as a solicitor with the information that I have and know has, has in no way violated the law or local policy. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to do that and to say that.
Thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
Better. Yeah. Joe Horn, 2:30 center, I'm trying, bear with me, I wasn't actually planning to say anything today, but just kind of listening to everybody. I don't envy you guys. I definitely don't envy you to be there. What I heard was we're working on it. We have plans and that's everything we want to hear. So I wish you the best because it's in all of us, best interest of your safety or something. How? My question is, is, I wasn't here last year. So I hear things like, we've heard this before. My question is, if we hear this next year, what's the plan? I think a lot of us would feel better if we knew, okay, going forward, if this continues, we're going to do this. I think that's, that's a reasonable thing to ask. Anybody knows me, my number one thing is always accountability. If you're talking to my seven-year-old daughter, all I keep telling is accountability. My clients will be accountable. Because if I don't, if they don't, or I don't want myself, I get fired. I'm not saying you move from ABC to ABC, by no means, but I just think we all would feel better that like if this continues, what's the next step? That's it. So pretty simple. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, just commentary from my perspective. I don't speak for the board. I speak for myself. But I know that. I noted I shared last week that this was, this year's busing issues were a surprise to me on day one as well. I think they caught the company off guard and they certainly caught us off guard. So we are, I believe that we're all working diligently towards fixing it from that perspective. Because again, many of us, including myself, have kids in the district. I have a daughter in the district. And she feels some of this too, right? So. I think that, I think that these issues regarding having, so the software issue is a software issue. Bus drivers, employees, this is a Google away from knowing that it's, yes, it's an Ambridge problem that we deal with every day. And we talk about it regularly, every meeting, and we're trying to do what we can to work through it. However, I believe that we know, and I know many of you know, that, that these are issues that are nationwide in almost every industry. And we certainly are affected by that and we feel the pain of that. So while that is not an answer that's good enough for any of us, including me, because my daughter does still attend the school. We still have to fight through it. And I'm a believer. I'm a believer in the district. I'm a believer in the people that surround me on this stage, that every single person here has good intentions. There's nobody here trying to keep all of our kids home at school or make the buses late. We're trying to diligently work through this. And if there is a magic wand to fix it, I know that many of you and certainly we would have waved that magic wand. I offer the same apology Dr. Pascharella did, but. I take your point on if it happens next year, what's your plan? I think the things that he relayed speak to that. And I think from my perspective. All the cards are on the table and at some point you do have to look at options. But I know that I think our focus is the district. And certainly my focus has been not, how do we get money back, but we need to get the kids to school. We need to get this fixed. So not that there's not a time for that, whether it's sooner rather than later, I, I don't know what that looks like. But I know that right now the focus is on the kids, getting them to school and getting our immediate issues fixed before we worry about the dollars. Because, but, and, and I think the owner of the company shared last week that we haven't paid for it yet. The bill hasn't come through yet. I think he raised his hand and mentioned that. So we're cognizant of it financially. But I believe that we're more cognizant right now of how do we fix it? So with that, I appreciate again, all of your patience. You have the floor. Thank you.
My name is Don, you said it's 119, Anthony, my son, I received a message last night that at 11:15, I signed my son's bus with me. An hour late, morning and afternoon for, you know, potentially a question. So I had made arrangements myself to get my son to go to school. My concern is that he is in 11th grade and he has to meet graduation requirements. He continuously has to miss school, frequently picking him up and late, the bus not coming. Obviously, he has needs himself, you know, as far as being home on time and he had nine o'clock in the morning lunch. So him staying at school an extra hour in the afternoon, obviously, he's, he's under a kid. So my question is, is what are the educational ramifications of him continuously to miss? His first year of class every Sunday or buying early for school because I have four obligations. What is that like across the board agreement?
Good question. Thank you. I know Dr. Pascharella kind of talked about that a little bit earlier. Do you want to add to that from the educational perspective?
I would just say that if students are late due to this, we do have to provide them, you know, the necessary time. If that's not occurring, which I'm sure it is, to make the work up, we need to be made aware of that. Again, that's not the goal. They need to be there for the instruction and I respect that. So we need to just try to do our best in working with the company to reduce, limit. And hopefully sometime eliminate, you know, the excessive lateness of bus to help out.
Thank you, Dr. Pascharella. We have time for two more speakers, just that adds up. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jaden. I just want to thank our representative, the transport. I'm going to sign easy. I was able to make the last week, but appreciate you coming. But this is the first time I've gotten close to an answer back from ABC, the district on transportation, knowing from turning call. We don't know when the bus is coming to either pick my daughters from the house, bring them to school, she was stranded one day. My wife had to take time off of work together. I didn't take time off of work to take her to the school. And that obviously has a financial impact in terms of time loss, material use, wind, air, car fuel. So as a taxpayer, I would be very interested in getting those taxes back for failure of private service. Because if there is no financial incentive to do better, they simply won't. And the one thing that you did bring up, that's not a shock. You said you were surprised on day one of these buses you should have went. Why? Why was that surprise on day one? We obviously know there's a software issue, which is the first I've heard of this. Why was it getting a kid that may hear this on the diversity of school? That way parents can start planning ahead of time versus wondering what's going on. Three weeks into school this, uh, school year and saying that we're getting better. I'm sorry, that's not something to be positive about. That's an machine though. That's an invisible failure on the ground in terms of planning, logistics and communication between the different organizations and the parents themselves.
Well, good, good question. Do you have all your questions out? I don't want to take away your time.
Kind of more specific of what is the mitigation plan next year if we're getting towards the first day of school? And we're manually doing rounds. We're trying to get employees to film for drivers. When does that communication go out so that the parents know that they may need to adjust schedules? They may need to careful other parents. We have to provide a solution for that.
Thank, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We can give you a question, answer for your timing question. It was a very late in the game realization of the fit, of, of the sandbox issue, right? So I, I will tell you, I had spoken with ABC the week prior and, you know, everything sounded good. Practicing runs and I believe at a very late date, they recognized that there was an issue. And again, when the issue was recognized, our administration began taking immediate action up to and including spending. Hours that again, I, you probably wouldn't believe if I told you at the bus station with them, trying to help them side by side to reconcile the issue once realized. So again, I'm not taking away your point. It is a failure. I think we all recognize that. Again, I certainly do. I have, I have my daughter caught up in it too, but. The timing was just not good of the recognition of the issue. I believe that when it was recognized, everybody started taking immediate action to correct, but we were too close to the beginning of the school year. It's a very difficult situation, difficult timing. Thank you. I'm sorry, can you come to the microphone because they can't hear you?
The communication is going to start after the end of next year. We already have targeted dates in place with the administration so that we're able to give much quicker information with deadlines. So that things are ready, so that letters can be out that they're ready to get in the office. So that there's a week or two for any information to come in. I get my bus letter and I realize that the bus stop is wrong. I, I need to tell someone that they're going to go to grandma in the afternoon because the parents are working. So that we have time to route all of those things in. So yes, we are already on it for next year to have a timeline. And we'll be giving updating the information that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Gazer. I'm new to the Ambridge area.
I'm, I'm folding your thoughts for me, sorry.
Okay. Which is one which, okay, so my kids are new to the district is a complete embarrassment to me when I spent my whole summer trying to convince them that this would be better than Black Hawk. Never had an issue with buses with MacArthur at all. Okay, so they come here, they're already nervous because it's their first year of school and now their buses aren't coming. Or they're not coming to their stop. They're now reporting to me that they are riding the bus in the morning with few children, but in the afternoon. The buses so full that they're riding through to a seat. There's kids on the floor, all standing in the back of the bus, which is illegal. So I don't know, I can give you bus numbers if you want them. Yeah, because there's a middle schooler and a high schooler and they're both reporting the same thing. So this doesn't make me very happy to have just purchased a home in Ambridge, to say the least. It's just really, really upsetting to me. There is a bus driver shortage. I can tell you, I work in the trucking industry. I know ABC Transit, I work with them every day. This is a company that is a constant problem. I would not recommend continuing a contract with them. I just, the wages that they pay might sound fair when you're talking $24 an hour, but these workers are working four hours a day. So you have to realize you're looking at a very small section of people who would actually want to do those jobs or would be able to do those. You know, retirees, work from home moms, things like that. They might like, I really don't like speaking publicly. You'll have to.
Okay, you're doing good.
Yeah, so anyway, it's just put a bad taste in my mouth. Besides the fact that I didn't even have bus information for my children the day before school. They didn't even know where, what, when, nothing. So they started school, the day after they started school is when I got the letter that let me know what bus they were supposed to ride. On the third day of school, my high schooler missed school. I had to call and have her absence excused. Because her bus came 20 minutes earlier than it was supposed to. So just wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. And I do welcome you to the Ambridge community. I'm sorry for the rocky start. With that, I believe we have time?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So with that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I think there's one more person.
Oh, is there one?
We did take some time away from them, so I don't know if there's one more.
I just, I wanted to remind, I asked Dr. Pascharella, I should have asked earlier when you did your superintendent's report. To take a look at the middle school and economy as some people were reaching out with complaints. I know you sent us an email. But could you just give them a brief synopsis of?
You talked about dismissal?
Yes, just, just so everybody who, who was here last.
So. I'll start with the middle school. I had seen that a little bit prior to that meeting and I haven't seen anything that was alarming to me at the middle school. Entrance or dismissal. It looked like it ran pretty smooth. Obviously, I've talked to the principal. He hasn't indicated any concerns. If people have specific concerns, I encourage you to reach out to Mr. DiCaprio at the middle school. And if it's unable to, you know, be maneuvered or fixed, then, then let me know and I'll look into it again. Economy, when I did go visit Economy Elementary, from what I could see, I know that it is a change in her, in Mrs. Glitz's procedures. But her and her team have organized it where now, instead of everyone pulling over to this side and getting out and signing their kids out. They stay in their car and keep moving for safety purposes. What was brought to my attention. I think it was last week was the fact that sometimes that line's going so far back that it's preventing buses from being able to get to the point where they're picking the students up. On the day that I observed, I saw a pretty, myself, a pretty long line. But by the time the bus came, they were able to make the turn into where they would go. So they weren't slowed up. The second day that I didn't observe it start to finish, but I observed it again, just to see. The line was here. It, it went from maybe two to three minutes at the most before the first bus could turn in. To make the right turn to go where the bus pickup was. So on that end, I don't think it showed a significant. So on that end, I don't think it showed a significant delay in being able to get the buses there to be loaded when they were coming. That's what I saw. That's only two days. I did explain to Mrs. Galitzas, should that show a significant delay and buses come earlier and earlier and they are delayed, we would need to come up with another plan, which she, she agreed that she would look into to make modifications if, if necessary. So again, I would encourage folks, if they're having specific concerns with that, to reach out to the principal. And I think we have to continue to monitor that and make sure that the buses are able to get there.
Thank you for clarifying for those that reach out to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's Heather Kill, Heather Killington, 428 Glenwood Drive. This is the first school board meeting I've attended and I have to say, I'm actually incredibly disappointed in how this is going. I'm hearing so many excuses and not a single answer. Is there a performance improvement plan? What are the state regulations for the, like the performance improvement plan? What is the district doing to follow an like performance improvement plan? What is actually happening? I hear stories. I hear excuses. I hear we're trying. You've been trying for years now. I moved to Ambridge knowing that it was not the best school district, but I never ever expected it to be this bad. I have a couple of questions that I just kind of jotted down as I was listening to everybody else here. So first off, I really, I want to verify some information with you guys, okay? I do want to verify that the the base educational funding for Ambridge School District for this school year is $12,943,559. I'd like to also verify that the anticipated or expected local effort is $27,542,132.16. I would also like to, I mean, I have combed the website. I cannot find the 2024 budget, the 2025 budget for the district. I'd like to know where that sits because I just really quickly just jotted some numbers based on, I'm not saying they're like 100% accurate and I'm by no means like a financial advisor, but when I was looking at the numbers that were here under your approvals for budgeting and whatnot, the total I came up with was $34,5,630.72. And the total funding for the district is actually, if we're basing it off of the BEF and the anticipated local effort, should be about $40,485,691.10. And I'm just kind of confused because I'm not able to find the budget plan. I don't understand why we're having this busing issue. I, it's, it just seems very not transparent. And that's really disappointing because at the end of the day, the school district and district employees are public employees and they should be working for the betterment of the children and their district, not for themselves and not to get ahead, but it should be done for the right reasons. And I simply don't know that this school district is doing anything for the right reasons at this point. And that was, I mean, that was all I really had to say. I'm just super disappointed. A lot of gaps that I can't find information to. And I would like a lot of clarification on that. I think everyone probably would.
Thank you for your compliment. I believe the budget is on the website, right?
It is listed on the website, the 2024, 25 budget. We're pulling it up now just to give you guidance somewhere to go to look for it.
President Carson, while we wait, can I ask a question of ABC, please?
Sure.
So do we have working cameras and the radio transmitters that I believe somebody asked on all buses?
You need this one. You need this one.
We need this one. Yes, no, it's not on.
Yes, we have the two-way radio systems on all of our buses, depending on the vehicles, not just buses, all of our vehicles. And all of our vehicles have cameras, depending on the size, depends on how many cameras they have. So like all vehicles have forward facing cameras to catch things that are happening in the front while they're driving. All vehicles have at least one internal camera. The large buses have cameras pointing to the step well for the kids getting on and off the buses as well as internal cameras forward and, you know, coming from the back forward. Many buses and vans have at least one internal camera capturing because they're smaller. So I don't remember, I think the gentleman that had all of the, I think he's gone now. But he, oh, there you are. You had mentioned that the driver did not have a radio, a two-way radio in their vehicle. But they all do have two-way radios in their vehicles to communicate with us. They're not functioning. Okay, we do have people on staff that do go out and do what we call wellness checks on the vehicles at least every other week. If there's more time, they do them more than that. And what they do is go out to each vehicle and they check the two-way radios to make sure they're working and they check the cameras to make sure they're functioning. So if in the meantime between those, we're having issues, I will take that back again today and we will just start doing them more frequently. Any other questions?
That was my second question was if you could do safety checks or whatever. So thank you for answering that.
And we do actually have staff in ABC Transit that do nothing but like IT functions that take care of the two-way radios, that take care of the cameras, that upgrade the systems, that if they're broken, they fix them and exchange them.
Actually, I do have another question.
It's not, yeah, sir. Yeah, pardon me, sir. We can't, we're doing individual discussions and I believe our time is past. I hear another question?
I just wanted to know, is there a way for the bus drivers to report back to you when there is an issue? Like if the radio transmitter is not working because I know everybody's out driving.
They are required to do a pre and post check of their bus both morning and afternoon. So if their camera or radio is not working, they are and have books, DVIRs, they're called, technical term in their vehicle that they are to use to communicate those issues to the shop.
Okay.
So that those can be addressed immediately.
Okay, thank you.
And even though he didn't have the time to ask the question, can I answer him anyway, please? We are viewing videos quite frequently. Unfortunately, the videos that we need to view are the videos that principals are requesting for issues that are taking place on the bus. So by the time you pull those out and get, download all the footage and get it to the schools so they can take action on some issues that are happening, then we're not going out to other vehicles to do wellness checks on those cameras to view. It's not like a live feed that is coming into us all of the time. And according to all of our rosters for the routes that we're running, there should be no overcrowding on the buses. So while you were speaking, I was asking Amber if she knew what route you might be speaking to. And I had several parents shout out a number, so that will be addressed tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So just, just to answer your question about the budget, if you go to the business office page under departments, you'll see all the budgets listed there. If the current budget is under, it is labeled preliminary budget 2425, but when you click on it, it says final budget on the document. It's a blue square.
Can we get that corrected?
We will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to speak first. The first thing is, this gentleman that got arrested.
I'm sorry.
And we've gone beyond public comment by approximately 50 minutes and counting. So we'd ask you to, to address that with, with ABC. And if you don't find the resolution that you're seeking, then I'm going to ask that you talk to a building administrator.
Remember my daughter got lost in the first day of school?
Yes.
Do you remember the bus driver not having a radio? Do you remember not having her phone number on file? Do you remember all of those things?
They didn't have her phone.
Do you remember the radio not working?
Folks, we need, we need to have order and lower the temperature. I think we've seen plenty of examples. We need to have.
That's why I'm speaking loud.
I, I understand, but we have been 50 minutes past.
Past 30.
Speak in circles about nothing. Oh, I did this, this, this. Oh, I couldn't do anything because I didn't have time. Like which one was it?
That time doesn't get equated to when he speaks, correct?
Your listeners have been.
Which one said it?
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Hey, wait.
Sir.
Hey, hey.
Sir.
Wait for one second. Hang on.
We're trying to give you time. Just one second.
Let him talk.
We're okay with that.
Let him have his time, just like everybody else has. Let him talk.
First thing is, with this man experience, isn't, he's not the first person to have the police called on them because the administration was upset or had their feelings hurt for being called incompetent. I myself was arrested last year for calling Joe Lemenza incompetent. Arrested in front of my children on the steps, for saying you and your boss are stupid and incompetent. That's not okay. You need to address that. You need to address the administration using the police as their feeling police. That's not all right. You lied, man. The buses do not have radios. They don't have working radios. They're not tested every day. My daughter was lost for 85 minutes on the first day of school. The only concern of Rhodes was on who to blame. But you got up there and said they all have working radios. And then when he pushed you on it, that's when you said they're not tested every day. That's why people are so angry because you're speaking in circles, you're lying, and then when you're called on it, it's something else.
Sir, if you can direct your comments to the board.
I'm going to direct my comments to hers and she answered me.
And I'm going to ask ABC just to allow you to have that time.
I mean, those are all my comments. I would say almost everyone here is incompetent. You're speaking in circles. You give us half up. What was it that you said? You did due diligence. That's what you said at first. You did due diligence and took bids. But then when he followed up with another question, you turned it into, well, there was nothing I could do. It was in June and school started in August. Which one was it?
You want me to answer again?
You didn't answer the first time.
I'll answer it again.
You'll answer it first time?
I'll answer it again.
You'll answer it for the first time. Great.
You would like me to answer. I'm not going to interrupt you. Don't interrupt me. That's only fair. I'm going to answer. I'll answer it again. What I told you was the first time when we went out for bus bids, Rhodes and ABC went for it. We chose Rhodes because they were significantly less dollars. That's what we chose. They got a five-year deal. In June of that next year, where there's four years left, they went under. They were not going to provide any buses. We were up against timing to be able to get buses for the upcoming school year. I did make a couple of calls to some other individuals, not just ABC, who came in from Rhodes. Calls related to one person being able to come in, but they were not going to be able to get the buses for the start of school. We did not go for, and the solicitor was, was on board with that at the time because we did not have time to do a formal bid process again. And since we just had done it one year before, we needed to try to, I asked her, can I make additional phone calls to see who I could get a hold of in case we could get somebody else to be of competition? She said that would be fair because the only two people that applied the first time, one year ago, were ABC and Rhodes. And Rhodes was out and ABC was there. Other person could not get the buses to do it, even after a face-to-face meeting, they could not do it. Only person that could do it was ABC in the amount of time. And then I shared with the rest of the negotiation terms that I tried to do to be as effective as I could for the taxpayers while still allowing us to have buses for that August to start, not this August, the August before. And the rates were less because we were supposed to see an improvement in this year. That's what I said. I stand behind that.
Sir, sir, we just need your name for the minutes, just like everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Ending adjourn. Have a good night, everybody.